I appreciate that. I'm on. We'll start again. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, March 6, 2024. Ms. Devereaux, can you take a call, bro?
Lynn Larson. Mark Herr. Philip Lindholm.
Here.
Ellen Talbo.
Here.
Sharon Wallace.
Here.
Philip Combs is absent at this time. And Robert Estrada.
Here.
You have quorum chair.
Thank you. Y'all get a chance to see the meetings minutes that we're sent to y'all. I'll accept the motion to accept.
Motion to accept.
You have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of approving the minutes dated February 21st, 2024. Say aye.
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 Oppose? Right, thank you. Do we have any updates?
Philip Combs is now present as well, Mr. Chair, and no, no changes to the agenda this evening.
Okay. It's not like to open the hearing for public comments. And I see we have no one signed up for public comments, so we will close that public comment portion. Public hearing, we will now open the session for a public hearing. I'd like to, I see we do have a couple of individuals that like to speak. Please remember that we're accepting comments, but this is not a discussion session. Commissioners do not engage in conversations, but we do take your comments under advisement. And as with the public comments portion, we ask that your comments be courteous, respectful, and limited to three minutes. Do we have anybody on Zoom, by the way?
No, Mr. Chair, if you would like, I'm happy to do a quick refresher for what the hearing's about.
That would be fine, please. Thank you.
Sure. So as you see on the screen here before you, this is a memo that was actually presented at the last meeting because that's when the hearing was opened. But Becky Newton is also here this evening. Should you have any other questions of her? The multifamily tax exemption program has been in place for a long time in the city, but what's been proposed and is part of this hearing this evening is a potential amendment to a specific section of the city's residential target areas specific to the Central Business District, which is pretty much coterminous with the downtown subarea plan. So I'm going to jump down to that map. And so what is it, the topic of tonight's hearing is whether the areas in pink, which have been proposed for expansion into the residential target area, meaning that these areas would be possibly taking advantage of the city's multifamily tax exemption program with approval by the city council and through the administrative process that's now in place. And with that, I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Newton, do you think you want to add anything to it or you? At this time?
That's my fault. One second. Sorry. I would just add that we will be coming back to you at some later point to discuss additional potential expansions to other areas throughout the city of Lakewood after the comprehensive plan has been updated and other subarea plans have been updated. But at this point in time, we are offering this as an expansion that has been recommended by staff through myself and Mr. David Buwer, as well as input that we've received from other folks in the area as a reasonable expansion for the Central Business District. And if I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Did we get a copy of the input that you received?
There is within the packet. There are general comments that were provided by the Planning Commission. But through this particular process, we have not received any public comments so far.
Okay. That was my question. Okay. Does the commission have any questions? Thank you, Ms. Newton. This time I'd like to ask Mr. James Guerrero to come up and and speak.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is James Guerrero. Where was I at? 22 SoC Island? Not sure if you can do that today, but so give you a little background on myself. I actually used to sit on the other side with Mr. Estrada and the group there a few years back. So it's kind of interesting to be on this side of the podium. But so my name is James Guerrero. I'm a local architect. Full disclosure, I am working on a multifamily project that would be affected by this proposal. So but that being said, just as a, as a general concept, the idea of promoting density in our city center makes sense to me. That's where we really should be promoting, promoting, bringing more people in. We have the ability to bring people near our services and expanding in this particular area makes a lot of sense. I would say one thing that I noticed from the, from the mapping is that the current zone, the, I guess the city center zone is in red. And it does actually include the area that's being proposed in the expansion of the tax exempt zone. So it makes sense that that, it follows that that should be allowed to have the increased density. So just from a community standpoint, I like the idea of putting the density where people can get to their services and, and hopefully get into a walkable, walkable neighborhood. So that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr., is it Weisen, Weisen, Iverson, sir?
Hi, thanks for having me. Dave Iverson, Lakewood resident. I just want to voice my support of the staff's recommendation for this. I'm a believer in the city of Lakewood and I agree with everything that James Guerrero just stated about bringing more people into the city, into the core, walkability, and having nice places for people to live multifamily wise. Thank you for your time and for hearing our comments. Appreciate it.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak even though you haven't signed up? Okay, so everyone in the weather and you say there's no one on Zoom either?
Correct.
So I'd like to close the, the public hearing. So at this time, I guess it would be appropriate, I believe, Ms. Spear, to either vote on, on the resolution or, or carry it forward to next, next meeting?
Correct. Mr. Chair, you have the ability to take action tonight or enter a future meeting?
So I'll ask the commission, what would you all rather do? What are your rathers on this side? Mr. Combs?
We, we put it off last time just so that we could give people one more chance to comment. I, I'm ready to vote.
Okay. Any other comments? No? So you're all ready to vote?
I had one question.
Mr. Wallace?
And I don't know if that's, is the right venue, but on, are we looking at just, what exactly are we addressing here? What are we exactly, what is the question specifically at hand?
Ms. Spear, could you please again bring up the map or so that we can, Ms. Wallace can see?
Yes. So this right here is the current in orange, RTA boundary, sorry. RTA boundary for what's part of the downtown subarea. What's in the pink is an area that is also, as Mr. Guerrero said in his testimony, also part of the downtown subarea. So what's being asked for is not to change the subarea boundaries. What's being asked is not to change the zoning and what's allowed in these areas. What the Planning Commission is taking action on is a recommendation that would be forwarded to the city council to say, add these pink areas to what is already the area where multifamily tax exemption can be applied within the downtown. So you are not changing the allowed uses. You're changing the decision of whether or not the incentive of the multifamily tax exemption would be allowed in the pink areas of the map.
Thank you.
So clarification, multifamily tax exemption would give them tax exemption. Okay. Okay, so if we're all ready to vote on this, I need a motion?
I'll, I'll motion that we approve the proposed expansion of the RTA in the downtown area for the MFT program.
Mr. Combs has a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
And Mr. Larson has second. Okay, at this time, then I ask for comments. Any comments? Any questions? I do then. And, and please bear with me because I need to write it out. Okay? So this multifamily tax exemption program was created to encourage the development of multifamily housing in certain areas. In Lakewood, we refer to them as the residential target areas. City council established criteria for these areas. They're the ones that lack sufficient, available, desirable, and convenient residential housing to meet the needs of the public who want to live in that area. Program is supposed to stimulate new construction or the rehabilitation of existing vacant or underutilized buildings for multifamily housing. So after, as was pointed out, after considerable research and study by city staff, they identified and presented the recommendations to the city council who approved that area. And as evidenced by the photos that were provided to the commission hereby Ms. Spears, program has been deemed pretty successful. Property owners have stepped up. Program has become an important tool to support the development of affordable housing. But as was previously noted by one of our commissioners, we have a ways to go. There's a lot of area within the original recommendation that has not been developed. Don't know why, don't know what measures or actions the city has taken to encourage development, but it has not developed. Maybe they should. And now the Planning Commission has been asked to consider the enlargement or the expansion of the RTA because according to our, our own conversations, we have at least one property owner who is willing to build a family housing, a multifamily housing, if it can be issued a tax exemption. I'm not convinced that this proposed expansion area meets the city council's criteria. The proposed area is mostly commercial with existing businesses. The multifamily tax exemption program as posed by the city council is supposed to stimulate new construction or the rehabilitation of existing vacant or underutilized buildings. I don't see any. So I'm not going to vote to recommend the expansion again because the original area of the RTA has not been developed. I don't feel the expanded area meets the city council's criteria of stimulating new construction or rehabilitation of existing vacant or underutilized buildings. And I'm glad to see we had a couple of individuals that came forward, but those were the only two. And this has been going on for how many weeks? And finally, at the very end, we finally get a couple of individuals who step forward and I'm glad to see that, but at the very end. So anyway, those are my thoughts. So we're ready to vote? And I asked Ms. Devereaux to take role by, by name, individual. All those in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
As Mr. Larson, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Can we comment on, on comments that are made? This is discussion time, right?
This is discussion time and I, that's what I asked initially.
Well, now that you made a statement, I figured it was appropriate to comment on.
It's appropriate to comment on.
Yeah. I, I appreciate where you're coming from. I think it's a little bit of the chicken and the egg to say that we haven't had development with this program. The idea behind the program is to incentivize. And if people aren't developing, then we need to look at why they're not developing, not take away programs that might incentivize that development. And so I, I think expanding the program makes a lot of sense as you've heard me talk about. I think, I, and I understand where you're coming from. You don't want to expand a program if it's not effective. But if it's not effective in one area, what if it were effective in this area and did accomplish something? And that's what I'm hopeful for is that over time, this will get some momentum. Projects only get built when they pencil. Developers aren't going to take a risk or put money out there if they can't make it, make it make sense economically. And this isn't just for affordable housing. It's for all housing types because we need all housing types in our city right now still. We're, we're behind on every benchmark. So I, I think this program is not just good. It's really an effective tool. Cities all throughout the region are using it. I, I can't imagine not expanding it. And, and so my, my recommendation would be to move forward with it. And I, I understand people having reservations, but I think it's just good to talk through what those are because it's good to understand why the program's there. And if you've read the, the website, you know, that the state put out informing on it, it, it really does talk about the purpose of this. And this isn't just to create affordable housing. It's also economic development. And so this is just one of those tools to help create construction, revenue, development and growth. And saying that, well, we only have one-story buildings. Well, we likely will only have one-story buildings always if we don't put programs out that'll help draw that in. So that, that would be, and, and this doesn't guarantee we're going to get anything, but at least it puts a line in the water so we have the opportunity to fish. So that's, that's my response. And I don't have any heartache with someone disagreeing with me on it. So no, no worries. But I feel like it needed to be said, so.
I understand. Thank you. Open for anyone else? Anyone else to comment? Ms. Wallace?
Oh, yeah. It was on for a second. There you go. I guess one of my concerns and why I wanted it clarified was Lakewood is a bedroom community. We don't have industry. We don't have a lot of drivers for development. The one area that we do have some development is in the town center. And the proposed multi-story facility or project that we've discussed previously is quite a big project for this city. And it will have a significant impact. May be good, may be bad. We hope it will be good. I think we all would like it to be, but I'm not convinced that we know if this is really going to be effective. Is there really the drivers here for that? And this is a bedroom community. I'm a little concerned that we may be hurting people who are vulnerable in that area. And with tax dollars, is that what we really want to do is to, to do that? And so I'm concerned. I saw where they're going to lay out the large project. Heard a lot of feedback from many people in the area who are a little reticent. Not because they don't think it's a good idea or that it's a bad idea, but it's a huge change for Lakewood. And so would it be a consideration to see what happens and just see? I'm not saying wait forever, but is this something that you want to really push now? Or is it something we say, let's see what happens in three months? Do we like it? Are we happy? So I just wanted to bring that up for consideration because I don't think we know. But then again, it's also a small area that we're asking to change. It's already got most of the stuff. So why not? But I think that we, all, each of one of us should think about it very carefully and make the best decision that we can. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Devereaux. All those in favor of, we have, we have a motion and we have a second by Mr. Larson.
Would you like a roll call vote?
A roll call, please. Yay.
Yes. Yay. Yay.
Nay.
Nay.
So the final vote was five to two. Motion passes.
Okay. Thank you all very much for all your comments and your consideration. And shall we move forward now? Next in line is our new business. And that would be whom?
That would be myself, Mr. Chair, presenting you with the 2024 annual housing report.
So some of this information will not be new to you. Some of it will be presented in a slightly different way perhaps than what you've seen it in before. And some of it will be organized in a way that raises some issues related, not only just to what is the state of building, construction, and housing, in particular, construction in the city, but how does this tie into the planning that we've been talking about for a long time now at the Planning Commission with our comprehensive plan 10-year update? So the annual report, as the name implies, is done once a year. The focus of the report each year changes a bit. And last year, if you'll recall, or actually, there wasn't one last year. It was the year prior. There was a lot of conversation about the rental market as well as mobile home parks, in part because there was a hurt out there in the economy because of COVID. Things have fast-forwarded a couple of years now. There's a few other things that have changed in the market as well. And again, we're dealing with these 10-year policy changes that are incorporated into this report as well. So what you see here is just a summary of what was included in the annual report. Demographics, market conditions, housing production data, conversation about what's happening in the comp plan update related to housing specifically. Some of the pending changes regarding not only planning for housing, but permits. And then looking at some pending regional affordable housing and subsidized housing efforts that are either ongoing or are about to launch. Information about short-term rentals and then also residential parking policy within the city. So starting with demographics and some of this as well, you've seen in the housing needs assessment that was provided to you at the start of the year. But I think it's not a surprise to folks that Lakewood's population is diverse. It is a majority non-white and it continues to go in that trend. The population, especially of African-American, of those that are non-white, are generally poorer and rent rather than own their homes. Some of the areas that have the highest area of vulnerability, health risk, and displacement risk are those that are the most racially and ethnically diverse. And the number of people who have checked in through the county's HIMSS system, the, I'll just call it HIMSS, I apologize. Their last residence being reported as Lakewood has raised, gone up by about 53% in the last six years. So a little more information here, breaking out race and ethnicity changes between 2015 and 2020. You'll see there again that drop in the total percentage of white and the continuing growth of non-white races in the mix of city population. Race and income category among renters. So one thing to point at here, since I referenced black or African-American in the last comment. If you go down to that line and you'll see in dark red, there's a 28% number there and then a lighter red of 16%. So those are extremely low or very low income residents of the city who rent. Compare that at the top or the second line with the white alone, 16% extremely low and 15% very low. So again, that is probably the largest disparity among all of the different racial groups. But in general, those that are non-white are those that are experiencing additional low-income stresses. This is the information regarding those that have reported in the HIMSS system that they were, their last zip code was in Lakewood. As of 2017, the year-end total was 407 people. Fast forward to 2023 and that had jumped up to 624. And I would just mention the reason the 2021 number is low as that was in the middle of COVID and the way those were tracked, those numbers were tracked, was different at that point in time. So moving quickly over into plat and activity in building between 2013 and 2023. So a total of 11 years, actually. Slow but steady growth. And then we also have, as we've talked about, some changes in regulating housing and zoning that will be affecting that growth rate over time. And then there's also, again, this new state law regarding how permits are tracked that has gone into effect now, but the first time we actually have to start reporting to the state is in March of 2025. So if you were to look at our 2022 population, it was about 63,800. Whereas the 2044 population target for the city was 80, or is 86,792. And so the reason you see the dotted line from 2022 on up is that shows a change in trajectory and rate of growth that would be needed in the city in order to meet that target. So if you compare it to the solid line between 2000 and about 2022, you do see a change. Whether we get there or not is a separate question from the fact that we know this is the case. And the, the planning that the city is doing is trying to open the doors for developers to come in and be able to produce the, the product that would get us there. So past permit activity for the years 2013 through 2020, you'll see those numbers there on top. That's housing production rates, number of units per year. The second set of graphics breaks things out. The blue number are the multifamily units produced in each year, and then the brown is the single family. You'll see that for the most part, we continue to do predominantly single-family construction in the city of Lakewood. But we did have about 28% of the total number of units created in that decade were for multifamily. Plat activity, meaning creating new parcels where homes can be built on or other housing units can be built on. Again, you'll see the numbers for the decade through 2020. And it was quite variable from year to year. Part of that is because Lakewood itself doesn't have a lot of vacant property. It is built out. And so it's a matter of either compiling parcels, redoing boundary lines and coming up with some redevelopment, or it's simply where do you find a site large enough to, to be subdividing or creating multiple parcels? But this is the information from 2013 to 2020.
Ms. Spear?
Yes.
Did that chart show that although we have, majority of our housing now is multifamily, probably about almost 60% or so? You're saying that trend-wise, we're going to surpass, single family is going to surpass multifamily?
No, I wouldn't go that far with this information. What I would say is that in that time period, about three times the amount of construction was of single-family units versus multifamily. But given the total number of units we're talking about, that's a drop in the bucket. There's about 27,000 housing units total in the city. So just it's, the, the trend turned in this decade to do more single-family, but that's not changing the bigger picture.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. So between 21 and 23, here's some information regarding the units that were created. And then in addition to that, additions and remodels on residential properties as well as the plats that were created. So the total number of units in that 2021 through 23 period is 485. You see how those are broken out. So again, there are single-family detached of about 150, single-family attached, i.e. townhome condos. You've got that at about 25. But when you go back up higher into apartments and duplexes, you'll see there was about 272 units there. And then ADUs, we were at 27. So again, there's still this mix happening, but it's not going to significantly change the, the total number of either type percentage-wise compared to each other citywide. You've seen this chart before, but just You've seen this chart before, but just to repeat it once more. In 2044, there are now a number of units at various levels of affordability that the city must plan for. The total number of units is 9,378. And then this is broken out, again, by multiple percentages of area median income. And there's also a number for the emergency units that must be allowed. This work is ongoing right now as part of the 24 Comp Plan Update, and so this will actually be in front of you, starting May 1st, as part of the documents that you will see at that point. I've mentioned in the past that we were checking to see whether either the downtown subarea plan or the station district subarea plan, which both have their own little growth targets, would need to change in order to fit these numbers into them, because they predate it. Based on our analysis as of March 1st, those two subarea packages will not have to change. And we will just move forward with the citywide planning numbers, and things should come out in the wash. This is showing you, and again, I know some of this is a little repetitive, but trying to bring it to you from a slightly different perspective. This is showing you the residential areas map. So these are all of the different parts of the city where some type of residential development is allowed. The yellow is the single-family, and that, at this point, is the R1 through the R4 zones. You see here on the left-hand side, what are the densities per acre, not per lot, but per acre within each one of those zones right now. The red is the two subarea sections of commercial or mixed use, which does allow residential as part of those developments. And then the various shades of brown are multifamily. The final color on here is the pink, which is a neighborhood business, which again, would allow certain types of higher-density residential. So when we start to talk about in-state law, this new per-lot allowance that the city has to open its books up to either multiple middle housing units or multiple accessory dwelling units in addition to the primary law, a primary home. All of these areas are in yellow, are where that could potentially apply. And these four questions are the very first step to figure out if, on a specific parcel, those rules would be in effect. First of all, the size of the lot, because the state law distinguishes on that basis. How many units are already there? Whether the underlying zone density is above or below what is being contemplated in the state law. And try to break this down. If you have, however big the size of the lot, a number of units that actually is more than adding two more ADUs, if you, for whatever reason, already have that on your lot, that wouldn't necessarily have this law apply to you. The city is actually able, under 6,000 square feet, to maximize ADUs at two. And then over a square, 6,000 square feet, it can get, decide how many ADUs per lot is going to be allowed. If you already have all those on there, and then we're wanting to add another one, in theory, the city could say, you've already hit that for this neighborhood, you're done. The last thing to ask is about critical areas, and this will be shown on the next map in more detail. But critical areas pretty much always affect the available density on a particular parcel when it comes down to brass tacks. So if the zone says you can have four units on that lot, for whatever reason, if you've got trees, if you've got a creek, if you've got steep slopes, if you've got something else, that may actually limit the number you can actually have. So this map, again, you've seen this, I know, but-
Beer?
Sure.
Question, Ms. Talbot?
Yep.
On this map, before you go on to the next, I just wanted to ask, the pink areas versus the city center.
Uh huh.
Are there building height limits in the pink areas? Or are, does the code treat building height limits as uniform throughout for commercial and mixed use?
I'm sorry, Ms. Talbot, I'm not sure. I know in the downtown and station district, because it's a form-based code and it's more recent, there are height limits. I'll have to get back to you on the other zones in the city.
Mr. Larson?
I, I wonder how these numbers look, or would look differently, if at all, if our earlier discussion about combining the Springbrook area with the Station District area into the same zoning as mixed residential. Whether that would change the analysis in the, in the numbers, because they share so many similarities. And as, as I said before, I advocate combining them into the same zone, because they have, because they have so many similarities, and it makes things simpler. But I just wondered how the, the combination of that would change the numbers that you just described.
The numbers would not change. You would have the zoning in Springbrook, as it stands, is multifamily. So it would most likely, those multi, or excuse me, those middle housing and ADU settings would not apply to those at all, because that's only in single-family areas in the city. So, yeah, the, the pink areas is that neighborhood business, and again, that density is likely higher than what middle housing and ADU laws would apply to. So it wouldn't make a difference in terms of the density and numbers you see on the left are those questions being asked.
Thank you.
Sure.
Ms. Beer?
So this map is depicting in a little more detail where the city thinks the new requirements for the city to allow multiple middle housing, meaning anything from a duplex up to cottage housing or courtyard apartments. And then you also have critical areas shown. You have in red, the streets, which are narrower than 60 feet. And that relates to the parking question, which is kind of a tangential or a ripple effect of these changes to housing densities over time. But to give you a little more time with this map, on the top right, in somewhat blurry text, you'll see potentially affected, potentially not affected, or undevelopable and not affected. And pairing that up with the legend down at the bottom. The blue is where, pretty clearly, this is where you would have people with the opportunity to put multiple units on a lot. Unless, you see, for instance, where my cursor is, if you can see that around the lake, there's some green, that's Gary Oaks. And if it's more than two together, that's considered a critical area as a stand. Or it's somewhere, for instance, up here in, I guess this is part of Oakbrook still. There's some areas that are affected by creeks, and there would be buffers because of those creeks. So for the most part, the blue is where you can assume there's at least going to be a question asked, and somebody could pass the initial sniff test to say, I'm interested in putting additional units on my lot. The areas that are gold, so Oakbrook in particular, but also areas down through Tillicum, down in Woodbrook a little bit, around some of the lakes. These are areas that are considered potentially not affected. And that could be, there might be CCNRs in this area that says only so many units per lot, which at this point, state law is letting stand as, as controlling. Although that may change in the, in a future session. It may also be just the size of the lot itself. It's so small that it doesn't have space to do more than what's already on it. Or there may already have, again, the critical areas I mentioned, but it may be the size of what's on the lot as well, what's, what's left. And then the pink, the softer pink, is areas where it's undevelopable or not affected. Could be it's already hit the maximum number of units on the property, or there's significant critical areas there. So granted, this is by no means the final answer. If a parcel owner wanted to know about this once it's in effect, they should not take this as gospel. They should see this as a starting point and begin a specific analysis of their parcel and talk to the city. However, this gives you a sense of where middle housing and ADU development would likely be happening in the next five to 10 years. So any questions on this? Okay.
And at some time, we're going to address the short-term rental.
Yes, yes, that'll be a little further down the, the line here. But that, that also does get affected by this to some extent.
Thank you.
So just as an aside, something that the city is also dealing with is state law changed to now require additional reporting to the Department of Commerce, which hasn't been required in the past annually. Talking about permit time periods, how long does it take for the city to complete permit review? The ongoing information about those who do submit permits, local governments and the state as well. And also the total number of decisions, meaning administrative or hearing examiner decisions issued for the, the permit types that are required under the state law. All of this is on the backend administrative requirements that all of the jurisdictions have to follow now. And I would say we're about 75% set up to be able to respond to this right now. We are in the middle of updating some software in order to be able to track and report more easily, but this is a, an additional administrative burden on the department, just for your awareness. That'll be happening at the same time as those new additional housing applications potentially start to come in, middle housing and ADUs. So you asked Mr. Chair about short-term rentals. As also mentioned in the housing report, we do see the number of short-term rentals going up. And that's before any of the discussion about being able to build multiple ones now in areas where maybe there hasn't been in the past. And how the city is going to address that is a policy question, because on the one hand, the city could say, short-term rental's good anywhere and everywhere. Let's recommend them, let's encourage them as an economic development tool, or let's use them. I think it was discussed both here and at council level as a way to allow or encourage people to build something, and then if it doesn't succeed as a short-term rental, it becomes a permanent rental. Or it could be a decision ultimately that says, given the changes to housing density and the potential for, in particular, parking ramifications because of these additional units in these older neighborhoods with narrower streets, we're going to limit, or we're going to prohibit altogether, short-term rentals. So that policy question will be back in front of you this spring. You made your recommendation up to council, council talked about it this last fall, and decided to roll it back into the 24 package. So you'll be talking about it again in May and June.
Good, okay.
And then related to this is the parking. I, I showed you on that map all of these red lines, including in the areas of blue, where we are, we're likely to see the most development of these ADUs and middle housing units happen first. The city by policy right now does not allow residential street parking. Granted, it, it practically happens, but that is an enforcement question. That is a violation of the current policy of the city. These streets at the narrow width of 60 feet or less are narrower than what the city would currently allow to be built as a residential street, even without parking. They're even narrower than what would be allowed for a no-parking street. So if over time, the decision to go ahead and allow short-term rentals in ADUs is one part of it, but just the general rule that we're now going to have to allow middle housing and ADUs to be built in this single-family areas, how will that affect streets and parking over time? And does the city council want to reexamine the longstanding policy of no parking on the street? Because, as we've talked about before, for instance, here in this U shape of the hatchmarks, state law doesn't allow the city to require onsite parking, on-the-lot parking, for those additional units. So where are these people going to park their cars? The thought behind the state law is these people won't have as many or will not have any cars, because they're using the transit that this is geographically close to. But I think we've talked about this before. This U shape is based on the pending Pierce Transit, Bus Rapid Transit route, which at this point is not scheduled to start being constructed at least until 2030, and it would take another 10 years beyond that to be completed. And then down in Tillicum, this area here is because by 2045, there's supposed to be a new train station down there tying to the one that's in our station district. So for Tillicum, it's a 20-year-plus gap. For Pierce Transit, it's BRT, we think it's about a 10- to 15-year gap, where the city is not allowed to register, or require parking because of the state law, but the, the transit that's supposed to be serving these units just isn't there. So we're kind of between a rock and a hard place.
Going back to the parking.
Uh huh.
I mean, excuse me, the street. I thought it was 60, and you could have utilities underground, but with 50, you could go to 50, but no utilities. But 50 was minimum.
A little, little different than that. 60 feet is if the utilities are above ground. 50 feet is if they're underground. Neither one of them allows parking. That's just the design for the, the travelway.
Okay, thank you.
Cheers.
Mr. Larson?
Where does the public transit enter into this question and conversation? Because if we put more cars on the, on the streets, one side or the other, and we had needed for transit thoroughfare, then we've got perhaps a conflict. But over, and that, that's one thought. Another thought that I have is, let's just try one. You know, let's, let's, let's give it a five-year trial in a certain district and see if, if it works. Lakewood's got a unique situation to most people, or to most cities. And that is, we have very, very few straight streets, if any. And, and it's designed, of course, around the lakes, and so that has, over time, created what we now enjoy as a forested circular drive patterns of streets that are less than today's perfect 60-foot-wide street with sidewalk on both sides. And so we, we have this unique situation, but yet we need to try it in order to find some manner in which to comply with the state law that is, I think fundamentally based on the grid system. And so how, I suppose, the thought, how, how do we get there from here? And I just want to put that thought on the, on the table.
And, and that is the question that'll be going to council ultimately, because right now, the policy that is then implemented through the Public Works Department, grant funding and construction of projects, residential parking does not happen on streets. It happens onsite only. So it's, they need to make the decision whether to change that, whether it's in reaction to this specifically, or, or just for whatever reason, the city council will be taking that up this summer.
Any other questions? Okay, Ms. Beer?
Okay.
Thank you.
So this is just a note for all of you to be aware. Where are the short-term rentals in the city? As of November of 23, this, this is the graphic that shows you where they were located. And the key shows you, it's basically the four or five biggest sites where they get listed. So for instance, the red squares Airbnb, the green circles are TripAdvisor, et cetera. And compared over time, in April of 21, there were about 80. By November 23, uh, November of 23, there was 136. So the number is going up. Just as a note as well, as of November, the nightly rate averaged, or the median averaged $96. And when we first reached out to one of the tracking companies that looks at short-term rentals, their suggestion, should the city want to proceed with regulating the short-term rentals more than we do so now, which is you have to have a business license and you have to have a safety inspection before opening. If they were to go beyond that with the regulation in the city, taking a look at that nightly rate, multiplying it by about two and a half, which is industry standard for a business license cost, and then you use that additional funds to help with the administration of your short-term rental tracking, maintenance, inspection program, should you want to put one together. So that's another thing that the council would need to be talking about if they were to decide short-term rentals are going to move ahead, they're going to be everywhere in the city as they're allowed now. We're going to need to figure out a way to regulate them a little bit better.
You mean, if ADUs are allowed to be short-term rental? Is that what you're saying?
Well, this is short-term rentals of all kinds, this right here. Yeah, it gets, it's a lot of overlap, but this is short-term rentals period. So it could be an entire house. It could be an apartment unit. It could be a boat. I don't, maybe that's the one that's in the middle of the lake. I don't know.
Is it the case that the business license and inspection required of Airbnbs, is that different than a normal rental, which also requires a license and an inspection?
Uh, it would be a different type of business license that you're paying through the city. It might be the same cost, but it is a different business license that you're operating under. And then at this point, the short-term rentals, as far as I'm aware, are not on the same every-five-year cycle of inspection like our rental housing safety program does for all of the long-term rentals. I don't think that these are involved in that program, but I, I'll verify that for you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rome. Mr. Larson?
The character of short-term rentals, are we essentially talking about bed and- The character of short-term rentals, are we essentially talking about bed and breakfast type, type of functions? Or are there other functions that are included in that term?
It's just to say, anything that is rented for less than thirty-day, I'm sorry, yes, less than thirty days. If it's thirty days or more, it's considered a long-term or permanent rental. If it's less than that, whatever type of housing unit it is, it's considered a short-term rental.
The second question is, if it's okay with me. Have we looked at the, the tax business effect of the short-term rentals? If it is a bunch of people coming from outside of the area to have housing to visit the area, then it's going to generate some commerce. And I'm wondering whether that thought has been studied.
There was some information shared to David Buhr, the, the past community development director. I don't have all of his details, but essentially, yes, they do bring revenue in as a business license payer. And then the income that the owner would then pay in terms of taxes back to the state or whomever. I don't know how much that is. As it stands, this is not a loss to the city in terms of income. This is a policy question about whether the additional ADUs that are now allowed under state law for affordable housing could instead be used for short-term rentals. That, that's the bigger question we're dealing with this year.
My, my question was oriented as to how much money the people would spend while they were visiting in Lakewood.
I can check with Becky Newton to see if there's a way to track that.
Ms. Talbo.
Does the city collect, does, does the city collect code enforcement, code or, and/or safety enforcement data or statistics on short-term rentals? And I, I am, I want to be, I'm trying to be sensitive in that question because I am not asking the question. It's not motivated by, with any kind of accusation or, or malintent. It's more, it's more, the real intent behind that question is, because I think there are perceptions out there that are quite common, that are not positive perceptions about short-term rentals. And so to better understand and to better be informed about what is really actually happening, having data to rely to is why I'm asking if the city actively collects data on code or, and/or safety enforcement calls.
Right, thank you for that question. Right now, we do not in a, in a coherent way. What we are in the middle of doing though is purchasing the new tracking system that will be able to do that. The city does that initial inspection before the short-term rentalist said, you're blessed and you can now go forth and rent. But other than that, unless it's a police call that they would register, there's not sort of a, how many parties are you having there? Or how many whatevers are happening at, at this short-term rental? With the new software, we will be able to have a much better handle on that kind of information.
Combs.
Yeah, I, I actually had the same question last year when this came up. And I, because I was very curious, the perception versus the reality. And I was concerned that, that everyone views it as party central or noise or issues. And so as I, I went through the data and tried to find stuff out, not just for here, but for other areas that I work. The, the data for the short-term rentals, like an Airbnb, and the VRBO was actually significantly lower than I expected. It, it mimicked and, or was a little bit lower than the typical complaint you would get from a regular neighbor. And they were the same number one and number two, which was, and I, I, the numbers were really low, but I want to say it was noise complaint and belligerence. And so after seeing that, I thought, I'm, I'm a lot less worried about that part of it. You know, I kind of agree with Lynn, like, let's invite them in. Here, here's one of the things that I brought up last year, and I'm a little, and I'm a little bit of a wait-and-see. But you have two conflicting things. At ninety-six dollars a night, you're not going to be able to afford the, the cost of a loan to build an ADU. That number would have to be significantly higher per night. So someone would have to use an existing space in order to do this. But you do want to see it. And the other thing is, I, I have a difficulty, so the, the economics of it would drive this, and I don't think we would see a mass influx of these, even though initially I was concerned about that with the passing of the bill. But, you know, I've, I've since calmed down a little bit. And, and I think the, the other side of this is, if you want to go and stay at a nice place in Lakewood, and this is getting back to this, where do you go? Where is the nice place in Lakewood? Probably going to be on this list and not on, you know, hotels.com, because we don't have a place. And so to get those people to come in here still and not lose them, I also think, you know, that I like to have people come into this area. And since they aren't a problem, I'm actually a proponent for this right now instead of the opposite. Not to say I couldn't be persuaded one way or the other, but that was, that was, exactly your question is the same question I had last year. And so when I dug it up, and I'm curious to see what data you guys come up with, because I, I pulled stuff from all over the country and was really nerding out on it.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I, I really appreciate you've done that research, and I appreciate the concern. You know, have, having been someone who listed properties on Airbnb, I can say that homeowners don't want those parties. Airbnb itself has banned those parties. Not to say, of course, it never happened, but I, I would, I think that folks who are renting on these platforms were on the same side of the page in terms of, we want quiet, safe residential neighborhoods.
Thank you.
Okay.
Ms. Buhr.
So we've talked about this a little bit already, but again, talking about parking and how, whether it's a, a short-term rental or not, where this may have some negative pressures put on the city's existing road system. So again, the red is where the, the street width is less than sixty feet. And it is in many of the areas that you saw before in blue, where the middle housing or ADU lots are more likely to, you know, once they go through their initial parcel-specific analysis, that's where it's most likely to happen. One thing I did want to just share is, I went through the census data because, again, the theory behind all of this is that people that are within proximity of these major transit stops are going to access the transit stops rather than needing the cars or multiple cars. As of twenty-twenty-two, you have about forty percent of Lakewood's population with one vehicle, thirty-three percent with two, about twenty percent with three or more, and seven and a half with none. I can't tell you tonight where that would fall physically in the map. But just to show that you add the two together, between two and, and three-plus vehicles, you've got over half of the city with multiple vehicles. So how much of that would change over time? When you have the proximity of JBLM is a concern for the city council that's been expressed. Meaning you have the active-duty soldiers who tend to buddy up and, and be renting together, and they're not all going to share a car while they're here for two years before they get transferred out. So that is, that would affect to some extent what's happening with cars in Lakewood regardless of where they live. But it's also just knowing that the people who live here right now, that's the balance of vehicles that is in place. But what this is just trying to show you again is, will the city at some point need to address parking in some way, given that there will be more people living in this constrained geographic boundary? And in particular, these areas where per lot could suddenly go up? How does the city want to handle that question? The last thing I wanted to touch base on just briefly, this will come up again in front of you as part of the twenty-four big review, is the downtown transportation mitigation fee. The downtown is the only area in the city that doesn't do the usual traffic analysis, where you look at a project, how many trips or cars are going to be in and out of it on a daily basis? And figuring out from there specifically what type of improvements right on the frontage of that parcel? And then perhaps to the nearby road network, whether it's additional stop, additional intersection, striping for a middle lane if it's a large or something. This area, the, the downtown subarea, there is a mitigation fee that's set per trip at this number of about two thousand one hundred seventy-four dollars. And so I'm just going to pick on Barbecue Pete's because it's in my brain. Okay, Barbecue Pete's, when they came in a couple of years ago, there was an analysis made on the number of trips anticipated based on that use and the fact that they were then locating into an existing mall. The way the city analyzes this as of today is if there is a net increase in the number of trips to and from that spot on a daily basis, that is what a fee is paid on, not what the total number is. So I'm just going to make this up now. The last thing that was in there was a little local library, and there were five hundred trips a day that went to the library. Barbecue Pete's comes in, the timing and the number of trips changes, and it went from five hundred to a thousand trips a day. The fee that they would pay would only be on the five hundred trip difference. So you would multiply that five hundred by the twenty-one seventy-four, and you'd figure out what the fee would be. What you see here, though, in practice, is what has happened over time since twenty-eighteen, when the plan was adopted. And the fact that there were about twenty-nine million dollars in twenty-eighteen dollars of transportation projects identified for the area. This was decided by policy to be split in half, meaning the public, the general public, public grants, city's general fund, something, will pay half of it, and the other half would be through these transportation mitigation fees. Which means that private development would be eventually paying about fourteen and a half million toward these projects based on this trip generation of twenty-one seventy-four per trip. What has actually happened is these last three rows here, none, no dollars have been set aside on the public side yet for this. And on the private side, while over a million and sixty thousand were set as what could be collected per the type of use, it's only about a hundred and seventy-five thousand that's actually been collected. So again, out of the fourteen-point-five million that, under the rules of the transportation mitigation fee, could be collected and was planned to be collected to improve downtown and in the Green Street Loop and the other things for the subarea, only about a hundred and seventy-five thousand has been collected. So this is another big quali, uh, policy question for council. Do they want to keep going down the, the path with this system in place as it's being administered? And as it's, it's coming out? Or do they want to change how downtown transportation improvements are, as the costs for them are determined and assessed against private development? Because obviously, this is not getting you near the number that you need in order to build the improvements anticipated in that subarea plan.
Mr. Larson.
This twenty-one seventy-four per trip, is that allocated over a twenty-year life of a business that would occur? So that it's, it seems like a really big number. And it seems also that the hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars collected is today's count of what is also a long-term perspective. I just wondered how that thinking enters into the formulas and the, and the reality of the numbers.
If I'm understanding your question correctly, this is paid upfront before approval. It's not collected over time. So Barbecue Pete's with its five hundred net increase would have had to pay twenty-one seventy-four times five hundred before they were allowed to open and operate. The hundred and seventy-five, that's the twenty-twenty-three dollar value whenever it was collected. And the, the way this is set up, what we have heard from some, some internal, some external folks, is that because this is the only place in the city where it's done this way, it is not acting as an incentive to pulling people in. It's actually maybe a disincentive because they see this as one more hurdle during permit review. The other side of it is, the reason you're paying this fee like this is then you don't have to go through SEPA analysis when you're applying for your project. Whether it's economy, whether it's COVID, whether it's this just didn't work as anticipated, this is where we sit with the funds so far. And so the council's going to be taking this up this summer as well to say, do we keep it, doing it this way? Or do we want to change how we're assessing against downtown projects?
Thank, thank you. It seems to me as though, if we think about the, the trips in terms of what they do in the city over time, wear and tear on the roads, establishment of new roads and all that, that if it were a, a payment over a time period that, that the money was actually required, needed, that it would be easier to generate more business because the, the cost wouldn't be front-loaded just to get into business, for what it's worth.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Buhr, just, I want to make, ask a clarifying question here. This is a five-year spread on this hundred and seventy-five, roughly thousand here.
Yep.
That's a monster delta between a million plus and far, not even in the neighborhood of fourteen-point-five. As I understand what you're saying, this, any new businesses, as, let's use the town center as an example, new businesses coming in, they're going to pay this before their permits are issued, right? So obviously, it's not working. That's, that's not even a question, right? When we're trying to bring business in, the, the reason it's not working is because we're not getting new businesses. I think that's pretty clear, right? So has there been discussion of, we have to generate money somehow to pay for these projects? Has there been discussion of BNO or other, other generating, revenue-generating vehicles for these purposes outside of this, this vehicle?
One of the things that's being talked about right now, actually at city council, if you want to track it at all, is the tax increment financing proposal. And that, at this point, is a consideration, I believe, for two different areas in the city, including downtown. Tax increment financing, I'm going to butcher this and I apologize, but is, at its very core, the city in this case would bond, would improve infrastructure. And then as new development comes in, the additional revenue that comes off of the property with the new businesses in place helps pay off the bond. So the idea is, again, you're paying ahead from the public side, and you get benefit over time once, once the bond is paid off. And so for the downtown, that would incorporate things like the Green Street Loop again, or some of the other road improvements. But it is something that, right now, the, the public comment is open for. City council has to decide if it's going to work. And there's state-level approval that also has to happen for the tax increment financing. Other than that, it's really deciding if this is even good anymore, or if they need to go back to what the rest of the city does for traffic analysis, or if there's a new solution that's not being talked about right now should be used.
Thank you.
Mr. Combs.
On, on tax increment financing, just real quick, is you're investing in something for that long-term return, so it pays off for the investment that you just allowed for. You know, basically, and essentially what, what you just said. I do have concerns, and this isn't obviously up for today's discussion with us, but I do have concerns with TIF being used for just simple infrastructure, regular maintenance stuff that should come out of a regular budget. I think that money should, if we're going to do it, go into something that will actually improve and add value. Ms. Talbo mentioned something about improving Bridgeport at one point. That would, you know, create an entryway, a gateway into the community, you know, creating parks, connections. Those things are something that, you know, but there's got to be some kind of economic return on it. If it's just to create a park, but there's no development that can happen around it, that's probably not, you know, anything that's going to generate revenue to pay it back. So we got to think about those carefully. I, I definitely am not a fan of using it to just repave a road that we should be taking care of already. It would be kind of like just putting ourselves deeper behind. So that would be my reservation on that. But I, I really like the question. One, one thing, and I, you may know this off the top of your head. Do you know how much, what the percentage of tax base is, commercial to residential split right now?
I do not know that.
I, I'd be curious to know that because I, I work in other cities where they're very dependent on residents and others where they're very dependent on businesses. It would seem to me that we're a pretty good split. But the more businesses we can get in here, the more they will offset some of the costs that we as residents are having to pay. And so I'm a big fan of anything that draws them in. I, I do like looking outside the box. I, I get a little anxious doing BNO just because we're, we're constantly fighting to like, how do we reduce it? But I know we have to look at all those, so I, I do get it, and, and I'm not trying to say.
Certainly. The, the benefit to that is, as Mr. Larson was pointing. Certainly. The benefit to that is, as Mr. Larson was pointing out, if I wanted to open up any new business venture here in the city and I'm looking at that, that's a red, big red light on me going, oh my gosh, I'm already bootstrapping this thing, this project. And that's just another reason to go, eh, I need to look somewhere else. This doesn't, and a pencil and it's pretty quickly discernible.
And that's the way I feel too. That's why if I see TMF and if I see BNO that says, we don't, we're not, we're not trying to get you to come here. We're just trying to stay even. And I think a lot of cities will look at this, neighboring cities and say, how do I get to be about where they're at? So how do I get about as much money as everyone else? And my thought is, how do we be a little bit more affordable so that we differentiate ourselves from the others? So not having something I think is a good one. If we're not collecting, and I don't have all the data and council member or Commissioner Hurst's point, this isn't working. And part of me is just inclined to say, I would bail on this program because it's not working so obviously. And look at adopting something that maybe we could actually execute on since we're, and who knows if we'll be able to keep this 175 because we have the tenure.
Right. And that's the thing is some of them that was paid five, six years ago and year 10, it has to be returned if it's not spent. So yes, this is by, I think any calculation, this has not been as successful as hoped.
It's tough too because these projects, when you go out for financing, you're looking to go get grants, to get help, to pay for these big projects. To do that takes time. Then when you get the approval, it takes time and it can be five years or in Tillicham's case, 21 years before they see any physical improvement. So it's kind of like 10 years does go real fast. So I would say I'd like to see a little more information, but I, my suggestion would be let's look at this again and see how we start over and come up with a better program to get the city some money that actually makes sense.
Ms. Talbot?
I wanted to ask, so under this, under the TMF and what is outlined here, is it, is it the case that by virtue of a development or an applicant just paying the fee, does the city even, so then does the city require or does the city even receive a traffic impact analysis that would tell you the degree and or severity of impacts associated with the development?
This is the short answer is no, because this is supposed to be a trade-off. This is a planned action ordinance fee. So the idea at the time was if you pay this transportation mitigation fee based on the International Transportation Engineer Manual, you have a use, you have so many trips per day, so you're going to pay this much money. You then don't have to do your CIPA or your traffic and impact analysis. And as I said, I think a little earlier, that obviously hasn't been enough of an incentive here to be successful. So if they want to challenge it, if a developer were to say this fee is too high and do their own traffic analysis, yes, that is something that the city will take and look at and and that's in part, I think for at least two projects, that is why their fee either wasn't collected at all or went down.
Thank you. And the reason, I guess my thoughts on that is that. So on one hand, maybe that's the trade-off there is by not having a full TIA to tell you what, I guess if your impacts are severe. So I'm going to make up an example. So for example, if a fast food drive-through came in on Silicon Boulevard near Lakewood Drive and, you know, that's very close to Lockburn Engineer Hut or Lockburn Middle School, kids walk, kids walk across from Harrison Prep to Lockburn for football practice or whatever. But that drive-through, now you've just flooded that intersection with traffic and trips. And so and so I'm solely going to speak about the impacts for a minute, not the money aspect of it, but having that TIA would at least let you know if those impacts are severe enough that you need better signal timing at the crosswalk, longer signal timing, better crosswalk infrastructure, sidewalks where they don't exist. And so from that aspect, I think that 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 information is valuable for the city to evaluate. Conversely, I completely understand why it's a disincentive. I completely get it. Developers don't like paying traffic impact fees or impact fees. And it's a hassle to, it's a lot of work and effort to put those TIA's together. But I don't think they're not for nothing, especially at least for Lakewood where there are areas and large arterial streets where crosswalks are either few or in poor condition or and or just traffic signal operations just haven't been updated in years and deserve some attention. So TIF in the NEPA, under NEPA law can pay for things like like mid-block crosswalks, sidewalks, and that mitigation infrastructure that is necessary to to facilitate a safe facility for cyclists, walkers, whatever. So so I just want to point that out for us to consider. I would like to get to see some, I would look forward to hearing some more information and on this topic. Particularly kind of the pros and cons of, okay, what happened? I guess the pros and cons of entering the NEPA side or CIPA side into things. I do think that there is, you know, we want to see, we want to create incentives and we want to also see growth, but growth also brings impacts as well that that in some cases, I mean, they really do need to be mitigated. A lot of trucking facilities have come into Lakewood in the past and those are huge trips and truck trips that have impacts on the road and especially for walkers and so anyway, so that's kind of my, that's my soapbox is I just look forward to hearing more information come forward to us.
And you were referencing that TMF, not the TIF, right? As far as funding those things? Because TIF is the tax increment financing and TMF is the traffic mitigation fund.
Yes. So when I say TIF, I mean traffic impact fees under the traditional.
So I'm with you. Yeah, funds, funds related to the traffic impact. I'm with you on that. And I also, I I think that we do need to understand the impacts and figure out how to pay for them and who. I do recall, and I've actually quoted this guy a couple of times because he said something, you know, a month or two ago that really resonated with me. If whoever comes in is doing something that accomplishes one of our target goals, and we have two big goals that our city is struggling with, it's great getting jobs, more housing. And if they are able to help solve one of those two things, I feel like that could be the criteria for, you know, mitigating the mitigation cost. You know, we may be able to reduce it or waive it up to a certain point. Otherwise, pay your fair share. But that helps put our priorities where, you know, money where our mouth is, so to speak. And so I like that idea, Lynn, and yeah, I've shared it a couple of times. I think it's a good approach.
Thank you, Ms. Talbot. And Mr. Combs, Ms. Spear?
Thank you. Just to wrap it up then, I mentioned at the start that there's a couple of regional efforts that are ongoing. Lakewood was actually the first local government to sign the agreement to join South Sound Housing Affordability Partnership, or SHAPE. And that is a Pierce County-wide multi-jurisdictional group that is talking about how can we create affordable housing? And when I say affordable, I don't mean subsidized. I mean affordable to market rate. And that has been in place now two or three years. And we are part of that. They are in the midst of starting to plan how they will organize and spend a capital fund. So the, whether it's the jurisdictions all dropping money into a fund or some of them do and depending on who has given money where those housing units might be funded with the fund is yet to be determined, but they are talking about that in 2024. And then the other thing that is really on the cusp of happening is a I don't know if it'll be called the Unified Regional Office, Unified Regional Approach, something else. But this is a group that will probably end up looking like SHAPE, but it will be different because it will be dealing with homelessness services in particular and housing the homeless. And so Pierce County and Tacoma City had their councils meet together last fall to talk about this issue to say this is something that is also regional and is something that multiple jurisdictions should work on together. So Lakewood is waiting right now to get notification about what are the next steps to create this group that could in some form become a regional policy body perhaps to say homelessness doesn't know boundaries. This is an issue that all of us are having to deal with. How can we be more efficient and effective in the way we spend money and the way we regulate emergency shelters, for instance? So that is something that we also expect to come forward for policy discussion this year and perhaps funding discussions next year or beyond with the city council.
Mr. Larson?
I can't help but jump on that and say that if there's a way that the government and the regulations can be minimized or lessened, maybe a part of this housing affordability, because what we see in the home building industry is that it takes longer and costs more due to the regulations that one has to fare one's way through in order to build a house. And so if there was a way to streamline the regulations and put a maximum period of time that from a time that a building application is made to the time building permit must be issued and to work through our regulatory system to enhance the buildability and the affordability of the end product that we would be head and shoulders above the other communities in terms of being able to attract good quality housing that's affordable.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. Spear?
Okay, so this is truly the last slide. So with all of that, back and forth and competing policy, this is where we're looking at probably the hotspots for the 24 housing conversation in general, but also the comprehensive plan review, which again, you'll be doing formally starting in May. Do we look at creating new housing units no matter what, even if that means potentially displacing people and also doing away with existing affordable housing in Lakewood? Is urban densification more important or is climate change and resiliency more important? The state legislature has adopted new rules on both of those things, both mandating action by cities over the next few years. What about wildfire protection? This is another issue for those of you that follow WABO and the State Building Code Council that's happening right now. Is there a new code that will require additional fire safety type of roof construction or wall fire separation rules? We're waiting to see this week, actually, if a judge in Thurston County is going to require that that go forward now or could be postponed. And then we have all of the goals under the GMA, which are supposed to have equal weight. And so they're all listed here now and Lakewood's not alone in this, but this is the issue. How do we balance all of these goals while we're moving ahead with the planning that the city must do? So just a little primer for what's going to be coming in front of you in May. And that is it from me, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Spear. Does anyone have any other questions for Ms. Spear? Thank you again. Thank you again. Our next step is what?
Not sure if we have any reports from Mr. Bokey.
Mr. Bokey, yeah. Next up from you, no?
Nothing from me. Thank you.
Mr. Bokey, please.
Thank you very much. Paul Bokey, city council rep. We passed the new regulations that are in front of the judge in Thurston County on Monday night because we had to really.
Yes, yes.
Even though I voted no, but I had my reasons. So those regulations will be in place as of March 15. And if the judge stays the new regulation, I don't even know what the arguments are in front of the judge because this thing has been bandied about for a number of years. If the judge decides to stay the regulations, we'll have to go back in next week, I guess, and pull those things back. But there, I mean, it's explained to me, you know, I'm not a builder, that these are very difficult regulations, especially for new housing. Heavy use of heat pumps, various items. So it's impossible to tell you what the impact will be. The housing will be more expensive. So didn't sound like the, actually warehouses did too poorly because so much of a warehouse is not really heated. So, you know, we'll see. The market will find its, you know, it's like water. It'll find its level. But it's quite possible if those regulations go into impact that it seems like anybody who knows anything about it is saying that it'll be much more expensive. So how does that impact housing affordability? You know, if things get more expensive, classical economics tells you that there's just less demand for it, right? Even though if there's more demand, there's less people able to purchase it. So thank you for letting me pull out my economics 101. But beyond that, I really don't have anything to say. We have passed new regulations. We're having a retreat at the end of the month to discuss any number of items, but we're still in the planning phases of that. So the last Saturday of the month, we're having our retreat. We haven't had one for quite some time. But we're in the planning stages yet, so I don't even know where that's going to go. We're meeting with a we're having somebody help us, I guess. What do you call those people? Facilitator. Thank you. And we're, yeah, I think I'm scheduled to meet with him next week. So we'll see how that goes.
Mr. Combs?
I attended the industrial conference just recently and they, the two big developers for this area spoke specifically on this and indicated they anticipated costs to go up 15 to 25% to construct and who knows to operate because the cost of utilities. So I don't know, there's got free after all, even though I had the same thought initially, hey, this could be, but you know, the cost and the infrastructure and the areas where they're building, the cities may not even have the power. And I mean, it's a real cluster.
Correct. Yeah. And exactly. When you do the comp plan, and I think I was here last year when this group received the the briefings from the utilities, right? And they were all like, hey, we've got plenty of power. We're okay. Do they? Right? So, you know, it's just, it's just, we'll see. It's a brave new world.
Any other questions for Mr. Bokey?
Thank you.
Sir?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Closing thoughts? Closing comments? I want to thank commissioners for their comments and for their questions. Serves two purposes. It, you all that are experts in your areas, help others learn, number one. And also the public that is listening in, watching, they also learn from you all. So again, I thank you all. And with that, let's go home. Well, you know, it used to be out of here by, it used to be out of here by 7:30 and 7:20, but no, we got going. We got going. No, you don't have to leave.